Also work session. We have two items today, and the first one is the Expenditure Review Panel. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Amanda to walk us through a presentation.
Good afternoon. We're here to review the report of the Expenditure Review Panel for the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan. The panel's purpose is to annually assess whether tax increment funds were spent on projects authorized by the plan and to report to the agency director. You selected the members in January, and they include Chris Looney, David Mandelblatt, Josh Burstein, Tamara, Tamara, excuse me, Tamara Erminger-Underwood, and Tom Camus. Today, I'll briefly review the most recent amendments to the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan, which you approved in 2010. Then I'll review the panel's report, which are the accomplishments of the district over fiscal year 11, which is July 1st of 2010 to June 30th of 2011. We'll end with a preview of the FY12 work. Leading up to the 2010 amendment, council started its work with time to focus on your best outcomes for the community and the downtown. Then council had the benefit of public input from online surveys, open houses, a telephone survey, and many work sessions. At the core of these discussions was the acknowledged tie between the local economy and downtown, and seeing investment in a vibrant downtown as an opportunity to give the economy a much-needed boost. The 2010 amendment included a spending limit increase by 13.6 million, a provision limiting expenditures to three specific projects, which I'll cover in a moment, annual review of spending by a panel of community members, and termination of the district after the projects have been paid off, which is estimated for fiscal year 18, 19, five years ahead of the previous planned termination date. The Expenditure Review Panel was added to this existing oversight system with the 2010 amendment. The oversight is multifaceted. We have city council and the agency board, the Budget Committee, the Eugene Redevelopment Advisory Committee, the Loan Committee for Review of Loans, Housing and Urban Development when federal funds are used, investors when bonds are issued, and the city's external auditor for annual financial reports. So let's move on to the report that the panel completed their work over the course of the last three months. The panel reviewed expenditures of the agency, which are the projects approved in the plan: the Lane Community College Downtown Center, the Broadway Place garages, improvements to the park blocks for the Farmers Market, and projects approved prior to the 2010 amendment, which are the Broadway Commerce Center, the Woolworth Building, and lighting. So we'll review these projects individually. First up is the Lane Community College Downtown Campus Project. It's currently under construction on what was the vacant Sears site, a remnant from the property purchased by the agency and contributed to the new library construction. You see here an aerial of the property purchased for the library, with a parking lot south of 10th Avenue and the Sears Building to the north. The library was originally intended for the north parcel to be a reuse of the Sears Building, but ultimately, the new library was sited on the south parcel using urban renewal funds, which left the old Sears Building underutilized. And you see here the Sears pit. Or from another angle, you see the library on the left side and the post-demolition hole, which on wet days was the library's reflecting pool. Then the agency assembled the remaining parcel to make the site a half-block, and here you see the Lane Community College project under construction. And you recognize this, a rendering of the completed project, the Lead Platinum Education Building, a view from 10th Avenue. And this rendering of the Lead Gold Student Housing is along Charnelton Street. And back to as it looks today. It's on time, on budget. Students will move in this September, and the first classes are slated for January. This is a $53 million project. The agency sold the property for a bargain $1. The city also assisted by assigning $8.9 million in lower-cost bonding authority to LCC, $7.4 million to make the student housing a reality, and $1.5 million to assist with some of the energy conservation aspects of the project. The key involvement for today's purposes was the Urban Renewal Grant of $8 million, as called for in the 2010 amendment. As the panel's report notes, $8 million was budgeted and expended. The next project is the Broadway Place garages and Public Safety Improvements. The 2010 amendment called for using urban renewal funds to pay the debt for the garages. The plan authorized $4.9 million in principal, and the agency refinanced the city's debt for $4.8 million in principal, and achieved a lower interest rate. In exchange for these payments, the city continues to provide the parking facility to support downtown development and makes expenditures to improve downtown safety. FY11 safety included 10 extra jail beds and the hiring and training of additional downtown officers. Downtown safety remains a key element in attracting new businesses and new development. The next project is improvements to the park blocks for the Farmers Market. During FY11, staff met for several months with the Farmers Market Improvement Committee. The group shifted from consideration of small-scale incremental site improvements to considering a big-picture fix with alternative sites, street closures, and partnerships with other property owners. We hope that the Farmers Market will develop a solid strategy soon and utilize these funds in the near future. No capital funds were spent on this project in FY11. So that takes us to the projects that were existing prior to the 2010 amendment and approved for ongoing work. I'll start with Beam Development's extensive rehabilitation of the former Center Court Building. You'll recognize these images. The newly completed Broadway Commerce Center is a key project in the Downtown Urban Renewal District with federal funds for acquisition and construction financing. The project was completed on time and on budget and is currently filling with tenants. At present, the second and third floors are full, renovations are underway to accommodate tenants on the fourth floor, and letters of intent are in place or underway for portions of the first and fifth floors. You'll recall that the Beam project originally included a second phase: development of the pre-excavated site, the pit, which was formerly the Woolworth Department Store. Ultimately, Beam chose to concentrate its efforts on renovating the Center Court Building and accomplish redevelopment of the vacant site through sale to another developer. In September of 2010, council approved Beam's transfer of redevelopment rights to Bennett Management Company. In December of that same year, the city transferred its allocation of recovery zone economic development bonds to allow the bank financing on the project to achieve tax-exempt status and generate a lower interest rate. Additionally, the agency made a loan, and the city committed to lease a portion of the building. And here's my favorite picture of the two buildings together. The last pre-approved project is downtown lighting, part of the Public Safety Initiative. The goal is making downtown look, feel, and actually be safer, and no funds were spent in FY11. In addition to the projects, the 2010 amendment included funding for Project Delivery Administration, which is personnel, legal costs, materials and supplies, and debt issuance costs. The plan estimated spending $480,000, and in FY11, we spent $280,000. We accomplished a lot with our 1.4 FTE. The over-budgeted amount included variable costs that, in fact, were not as large as anticipated, such as debt issuance and legal costs, so that's why spending was less than The panel also reviewed the Downtown Revitalization Loan Program as administration of the program is funded by tax increment. The loans, however, are funded with other revenues. The flexible financing program is designed to encourage investments within the district that contribute to its economic vitality and density goals for downtown. During FY11, the agency funded almost $5.5 million of $8 million in approved loans to four projects that will leverage over $11 million in private funds. In addition to the substantial loans to Beam and Bennett, the agency helped finance Lord Leibrich improvements and Jazz Station tenant improvements for their new larger location between Olive and Charnelton. After reviewing the annual financial report and the 2010 plan amendment, the Expenditure Review Panel concluded that tax increment funds were used for the authorized purposes and in compliance with the plan. It's been a little less than two years since council amended the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan. At that point, Beam had not started construction. Lane Community College was five months away from acquiring the old Sears site, and the Bennett project had not even surfaced as an idea. Twenty-three months later, we're here reporting that the lion's share of the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan work is done. Broadway Commerce Center is actively being tenanted, the Woolworth Building is complete, and tenants are moved in. The Lane Community College Downtown Campus construction is beyond the halfway point. We will see students moving into their housing units at the end of the summer. We will have a completed, state-of-the-art, demonstration, energy conservation, and education building in the heart of downtown by year-end. These legacy investments are rapidly changing the community's perception of downtown. There is optimism and excitement. We are seeing other private developments, such as Masters Housing Projects, follow. We are also seeing rejuvenated interest from retailers and restaurateurs who now want to be part of the progress. Next year, the panel will look at the Urban Renewal Plan projects happening this year, fiscal year 12, which are limited to the downtown lighting initiative and potentially improvements for the Farmers Market, and taking care of the routine business of running the district, including budgeting, monitoring spending, paying down the debt, loan program administration, working with the panel, and producing financial reports. The Downtown Public Safety Initiative will continue thanks to agency's contribution to These projects are investments made by the community, and they are meeting multiple goals to advance our long-term vision for downtown and our city. Moving forward, there is still more to do, other development sites to keep the momentum going. An economically strong, active, densely-developed downtown is a cornerstone of Envision Eugene and helps us move towards a more sustainable, livable, and beautiful and prosperous community. Thank you.
Thanks for that report, and it makes us feel really good to see all that coming to fruition. I just had a not-direct question, but just wanted to bring up the notion of whether we would explore what it might be to try to expand the market on 8th, or just test it out. I brought that up before. I'll just keep bringing it up, hoping that we try it sometime and see if it's good or Anybody else have anything they want to ask? Any comments, questions? Alan and then Andrea.
I'm interested in the two things that still haven't quite gotten off the ground, which is the Farmers Market improvements and the lighting. So if you could address those in more detail about, so what's happening next, and what's the timeline for moving forward?
Sure. Nan is the project manager on those, so she has that information.
Coming up, Nan.
I can answer on both. I'll start with the lighting. We broke the $100,000 in authorized spending into four categories: targeted safety improvements, working with LCC specifically around the entrances to the new residential areas so that it'd be really safe for the new residents moving in; to small-scale lighting grants for folks along Broadway and Willamette; and then to aesthetic lighting, also on Broadway and Willamette. So we are starting to spend that money down. Targeted safety improvements, as an example, are things like just increasing the light output at the Broadway-Olive corner. We've worked very close with our police partners in all of these. And some of the small-scale grants, for example, are, they range from $1,400 to $2,700, and they targeted facade lighting inside and out so that when a pedestrian is walking by later in the evening, it feels and actually is safer. That's the lighting program. The Farmers Market, that we started looking at small-scale improvements there, but very quickly realized that the single biggest issue that the farmers identified was a lack of adequate space and circulation when they hold their market. So we did take a good look at expanding into 8th Avenue. We didn't get resolution on that. We actually looked at moving the Farmers Market a couple blocks over, potentially across from City Hall. Did not get resolution on that for a number of reasons. And so what we're doing is looking for a bigger-picture analysis and potential solution so that we can address all of the issues to make the Farmers Market really be the vital organization that it has potential to be.
So by expanding, you mean closing 8th Avenue?
We looked at closing 8th, yeah.
So where's it going to go from here? Before we've got a bunch of unresolved issues.
We do, and I think what we'll do is need to take a more detailed look at each of the ideas of where they might either expand into or relocate to, and pull the committee back and involve the farmers in a solution that works for them. We didn't have a solution that worked for them, and so we all realized we had more work to do. I anticipate that happening over the fall and winter. Actually, I'll say, we were getting closer to a resolution, but then their season started, and that's their primary focus during that time.
I'm going to add to that, too. We're actively working with the Farmers Market and the county on space issues. There's a Masters project at the University of Oregon in landscape architecture right now that's also, I've been meeting and looking at their program elements, and that's a group we're also working with. So we're exploring a number of ideas.
So does that come back to council?
It does not come back to council because council already approved the use of those funds. However, we anticipate reporting back and getting input.
Good, thanks. So finally, I think this is fantastic that we've made all this progress downtown with filling both the pits and adding a bunch of people and investment downtown.
What's the total number, over $85 million?
Investment in downtown.
Just $85 million plus some more investment that's yet to come, so downtown's looking all good and better.
And that's basically what I was going to say. I just want to compliment the staff for all the work that's been done. I can imagine that in your career path, that this is going to be something that you're really going to be proud of as you look, you know, down the road. And I want to thank all the community members that also put so much effort into it, all the investment that is, you know, for people who are willing to look at our community and be here. I think it's totally awesome, and I'd like to just say, but I know it's not going to happen, but I really would like to say, when is it going to be, when are we going to consider this a success and start looking at other parts of the community?
Today.
One doesn't get in the way of the other.
You know, I ran for city council two years ago, and I promised people within two years we'd have downtown, the pits filled, buildings built.
I saw that on your campaign material.
But seriously.
We all don't know how to react, Pat.
You're welcome. I have a list. No, the, but seriously, everybody I know realizes how long it took and how much staff time and how much time from the mayor and elected officials it took to make things happen, and we are seeing things happen right now. It really is increasingly making me more and more proud to be a citizen of Eugene. I love this town. You know, I come from a city in England called Sheffield, the third biggest city in England, and where Sheffield Castle used to be is now where the Castle Market is. And when I talk about the downtown Farmers Market, I envision something kind of like that, that you've mentioned it being a vibrant part of downtown and a vibrant part of, you know, the future of downtown. You know, it really is. It's everything that we look for. It's local people, local businesses thriving, local businesses doing, growing their businesses. But seriously, at some point, it would be good to see more of a permanent spot where the Farmers Market is able to operate seven days a week and year-round. We don't grow everything year-round in Eugene, but to see a Farmers Market down there all the time, not unlike the way the Castle Market is in Sheffield, you know, an ocean away, it really is an intriguing thought, and it's not going to happen overnight, I understand.
Right, we need to get a castle first.
If only there was an empty building around 7th and Pearl somewhere.
If I go crum, I'll knock the castle down. So the other thing that's intriguing is you have people that are, want to be a part of the project, and you mentioned, I believe, restaurateurs and, did you say retailers? But you said people that want to be a part of the project. A question that I have that came up Monday night in the public forum is regarding grocery stores. We do have a wonderful grocery store downtown viable that a lot of people shop at, and it's been stated that it's pretty busy all the time. Is there any discussion or any interest from grocery stores? I know that a few years ago, somebody was interested, and that did not happen, but...
I'll give this to Mike.
Periodically, we have inquiries about a range of businesses. Grocery store idea has come up from time to time, but nothing has caught root at this point. And, you know, we can only hope that as a critical mass of improvements downtown becomes more and more apparent beyond the community and within the community, that people will respond to that. Obviously, residential densities have a lot to do with grocery market demand, and so those two things are curves that hopefully will intersect at some point.
You know, we have a market downtown that reminds me a lot of the market you see in San Francisco. Whenever you walk around in San Francisco, you see Kivas in lots of different places, and it really is a nice, warm feeling to shop in stores like that. I think that we have, the Red Apple is not too far away, but as we get more people downtown, as more students, the more student housing is built downtown, people are going to need something within walking distance, and I think, you know, exploring that is something that I know is of interest. Was mentioned Monday night that it is of interest. It's a great process that I came in, admittedly, at the very tail end of, but certainly I'm enjoying seeing it come to fruition. Thank you.
Betty?
Thank you. I'm sure it all happened because of Pat, but I, as I see things incrementally happen downtown, good things, I'm really glad that we didn't do the wiping everything out a few years ago and bringing in the Disneyland thing. About the Farmers Market, it is the best thing we've had all these years, and it's my and a lot of other people's favorite place to go on weekends. But I think, are we still charging them for parking spaces that they use?
There's a microphone.
Well, yeah, we should.
We've worked out an arrangement so that we don't need to charge them. What we're actually doing is trying to use parking as a tool to really keep the kind of activities that we want downtown, and that's what we've worked out.
Thank you. And what some of those people have said, and customers have said to me, is it would be nice if there was free parking all over downtown. You go to the market, and you have to worry about people giving you a ticket, and I know people have arrived with their cars just as they're getting tickets, and the person giving the ticket really wants to do it. If we, if people were free to just hang out there, it would be very nice. And I think, I still think we should have free parking all over downtown. I thought that even before Mike said it years ago, but I thought it years ago, even before I knew Mike. But I think that at least we could try it on Saturdays, which is the time when there are a lot of people around.
I'll second that motion, too.
Thank you. And there was something Pat said I agreed with, but I forgot what it was.
It was, "How do Sheffield United?"
I know. I thought Sheffield had knives. But, okay, that's all.
Must be time for Chris, which theater?
Thank you. I am just incredibly impressed with everything that we have done, and it is a tribute. Firstly, it's a tribute to this council being able to bring itself, you know, into agreement and see itself moving forward, but also the ability of the staff to execute that vision and to say, "Yeah, we can do that," and everybody has already talked about how great this stuff is. There's still work to be done, but I am confident that we are making progress and will keep moving in that direction. But the additional piece is also, I think, the message that that sends to the rest of the community, that we not only can do things when we set our mind to do it, and we can make great things happen downtown, but that we can also say we're going to do something, and then we do it the way we said we were going to do it. And I think there has been in the past a suspicion that when the city says it's going to do something, they'll do something else, or they'll do this, and then they'll only do it partway, and then they'll switch. And so as we do with transportation funding, and now we're doing with downtown, I think it's very important for us to say, we will do this, we will oversee it, we will monitor it, we'll put in whatever mechanisms we need to to make sure that it's done appropriately, and then, my golly, we'll do it. And I think that is probably, of all of this, one of the strongest benefits for me is the ability that this city can find its voice, say what it wants to do, the community can agree with it, and then we execute, and we execute in a way that is cost-effective, that has integrity, and that gets the job done. And I want to keep that momentum going. That's the part that I think is most important, and I think staff is ready to do that. They've already expressed the interest in doing that, and I think as long as our council can keep providing that kind of direction, this momentum won't stop. I think we can keep going. And so I see this as the pathway to how we can continue to create this kind of revitalization, not just downtown, but I see this beginning to happen all over town, because I do think that is an important part of this as well.
So I wanted to ask a question. Do we know when Lord Leibrich is expected to have its kind of opening on Broadway? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
I don't know the expected opening. I know they have experienced some delays because I think a big part of their project relied on fundraising, and, you know, we're in a climate, economic climate right now that's not very favorable for fundraising. Part of their strategy is to sell off part of the property that they own, and hopefully that will happen in the near future. That will help them kind of accelerate the additional improvements to the building. I think there is a first show scheduling, but I'm not quite sure when that is at this point.
All right, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you for that information. What I was speaking about earlier, and I don't know if everybody knows, I was just suggesting, and I suggest this to both the Saturday market and the Farmers Market folks because they're the ones that have been meeting and talking about what's the next step, is that I know there's some concern about opening up 8th, and I just, my suggestion is just try it. Just try it for a couple of weekends. It's not a permanent thing. Just explore it for a couple of weekends and see how it works and how it feels to everybody concerned, and if it doesn't feel right or doesn't work well, then scrap it, but give it a try instead of, we've been, because we've been talking about it and around it for a long, long time, so I'm just expressing this broadly to encourage that kind of conversation. I'd remind everybody that there is a Safeway on 18th that isn't too far away for folks to go the other direction. I would remind people that our parking garage right next to this current market is free on the weekends, and so there is a sizable amount of free parking on the weekends. And I, too, want to say that I think we are in a great period of staff and council and private sector working together, and I think that's a really good sign for our community. And I wanted to point out that part of what we've been doing is inviting some citizen oversight into some of the things that we've been moving forward so that they can hold us accountable in a very visible way to the community. I think that's a really, a really good thing, too. And Alan, you're next, and then Betty.
I wanted to, before we leave this topic, to thank all the folks that were on the committee that did the work to make all of this, Chris and Josh and Tom and David and Tamara. They met three times over three months and came to a conclusion, which is the second to last slide, that we spent, like Chris said, we had a plan and spent what we were going to spend it on, and so I want to thank them for their work. The two other things I think merit a little more attention is the slides that kind of went over pretty quickly. One was about the Project Delivery Administration. We had planned to spend $480,000, but only spent $280,000, showing that government can indeed be efficient and effective and go under budget on things, especially when it comes to administration. So that's the savings of $200,000. What happens to that $200,000? It just doesn't get expended. It's not an expense, so we just end up spending less on the Downtown Renewal District.
It goes to pay off the debt.
Goes to pay off the debt earlier than, you know, we're going to tell you, yes. 15 minutes earlier.
Three-minute help.
Yeah. And the other one is the Downtown Revitalization Loan Program, which has been around quite a long time, and it's just been a great program that we've had downtown and a lot of businesses. And we have a number of how many businesses have actually got loans. It's a substantial number of businesses that have got loans.
Yeah, downtown, wow, we go back to, I think, the '80s in this program, so I would say that it's in the millions of dollars just by volume and dozens of businesses. We've been active. We don't particularly have a large balance to offer right now, so we have all this momentum, so we're looking at ways that we can enhance that loan program to pump that volume even more.
The slide says 5.5 million. The slide says 5.5 million dispersed and $11 million leveraged. So I think that's two to one leveraging of our loan funds to get investment in downtown, which is fantastic. And I encourage us to find ways to replenish that fund so we can do even more downtown, because I think all the projects that are happening and all the people that are happening that are going to be coming down there, there's going to be a lot of interest in developing things downtown and improving existing spaces.
And before I turn to Betty, I just want to remember when we had the last round of the Olympic Track and Field Trials, we had low-interest loans to, for businesses to, no interest loans.
No interest loans.
And an encouragement to them to, to fix up the fronts of their buildings, and I might say there are still some that could use a little of that work. And I'm hopeful with all the momentum that's happening downtown that we'll go back out and really encourage that kind of taking, joining us in partnership to have the whole downtown look good. So, Betty, you're next.
Which brings me to the ISO that is this building, which hasn't been maintained, and I hope that we don't let it go, drag on for years when we start doing whatever we do, which I hope will be rehabilitating. But we'll have another ISO if we have a construction site, a demolition construction site here that goes on for years. So I think we ought to be able to do something as fast as Fannick did. That's not why I had my hand up before, but I agree with Kitty's, the mayor's suggestion that we try something. I remember when Paul Farmer suggested that we, he used to be planning director, for those of you who weren't around then, that he, when he suggested we close two lanes on Oak Street on market days. And we tried it, and it's been there ever since, and it helped. And I had a question about, I think about at least seven years ago, we had a committee with county and city and farmers talking about the farmer's market. We met over in the county building. And I don't remember all, and I don't know what happened to that. There were some suggestions that came out. I know some of them were that they needed gray water disposal or something like that. Restrooms and parking were three of the problems. And I, and I think there were other things, but that, we came up with a plan. There was, there was a series of meetings with some county commissioners, some city councilors, and some farmers, and I think somebody else. Anybody know what happened to that plan?
I saw them passing the mic.
Those recommendations, at least. Maybe it wasn't the hot potato. Right, it was recommendations.
It's got to me. So I think you're referring to the park blocks improvement plan, and we did take a comprehensive look really at all of the park blocks, how they function, gray water access and the rest of it, and we've implemented some of that. In fact, we used a renewal to fix some of the infrastructure related to the park blocks several years ago. But we could take another look and bring that information back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, Pat, did you want to say?
Thanks. Just, just one more, one more thing is that it's amazing how far things have come. I remember one day Mayor Ruth Bascom and I went down with a jackhammer and hacked down a fountain that used to be...
Oh, I remember that.
That was a monumental day, and, back in the days when Christine Anderson was the development manager, for those who weren't around before Christine Anderson. So, thank you.
All righty. So, thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it, and we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda.
Thank you.
So, this is a discussion of Capstone Collegiate Community Student Housing Development Proposal Number Three. Give the discussion. Do you manage it?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm turning it over to Nan for action.
Great. Moving on the way, cows, I think.
There you go.
Perfect. So today, we're continuing our discussion on the Capstone Student Housing Proposal following the public hearing on Monday evening. As you know, the site is between Charnelton and Willamette at the south edge of downtown and within the downtown plan area. Phase one is about three and a quarter acres. Phase two is, there it is, phase two is just about two acres, and they're split by Olive Initially, the property shown here, phase one and phase two, I'm sorry, the property shown in that little kind of green-orange color was not part of the project, but the developer and the owner have come to an agreement, and if that property is purchased, it will be part of the overall site development. Let's take a look again at the numbers. So phase one includes 232 units, about 600 structured parking spaces, up to 5,000 square feet of ground floor commercial that would be on Willamette, and 48 surface spaces. The number of units here is slightly higher because of the inclusion of that property that we saw in the previous slide, so it's about 15 units higher.
How much commercial did you say?
About 5,000, up to 5,000. Phase two includes 142 units and 450 parking spaces, structured and surface. The design is not as finalized as phase one is, so I don't have the split between surface and structured parking for phase two. The large scale of the Capstone Student Housing Project differentiates it from other Mupti applications that we've considered in the past. So the public process has been expanded and included council work sessions, today's the third, an extended Mupti comment period. The standard 30-day comment period for Mupti applications has been extended to over two and a half months so far and will continue until council takes action. In addition to Capstone's meetings with the Downtown Neighborhood Association, the Jefferson Westside Neighborhood Association hosted a public event related to the project. Also, City Club of Eugene hosted a public forum, and the city also hosted an open house at which the community was invited to learn about the project and provide input. The Sustainability Commission reviewed the project, and as you know, we've had two public hearings on Monday evening. These events are all in addition to all of the smaller meetings and conversations with stakeholders and interested individuals that have taken place. Let's talk about what we've heard. The primary issues are the need for robust and continued onsite management, the bicycle pedestrian path that would replace the vacated 12th Avenue that runs through the site, definitely a lot of interest and support for alt modes, especially to and from the university, and neighborhood context issues, they came up, as you heard, including concerns from Olive Plaza. There were also questions and comments about the design and construction. We took seriously the direction to find ways to have this project benefit the community and try to work towards a best outcome should this project go forward. I'd like to go through each topic. Onsite management during the Mupti period and after the Mupti period. Onsite management will be required during the 10-year period of exemption. This requirement will run with the property even if the project is sold and Capstone is not retained as the manager. By onsite management, we mean onsite leasing and management office with full and part-time employees, having one or more employees reside onsite, having onsite courtesy officers, courtesy managers making nightly property inspections, and providing information to residents about the sensitivities of neighboring properties, including Olive Plaza, as a part of the lease documents. Continued onsite management is critical for the project after the exemption period is over. To address this issue, staff will research and evaluate code provisions or possible legal alternatives that would ensure onsite management for projects that meet a critical threshold size. And staff will bring this information back for consideration and action at council by the end of the calendar year. Capstone proposes to straighten out the 12th Street alley, which now has a jog, as you see, and then rededicate it for bikes and pedestrians only. This is a very highly-used path which goes to the university area. Both the east-west and the half of the north-south alley would be closed to cars, as shown in the darker green, and the developer would leave the south half of the alley and also create a new vehicle access, as shown in kind of a lighter, kind of a pea-green there. In terms of issues regarding neighborhood context, Capstone has agreed to coordinate closely with Eugene Police to promote pro-social, courteous, and safe behavior on the part of the residents. This coordination will include working with EPD to align renter code of conduct with any social host regulations, and also working with EPD to develop a protocol for responding to nearby residents and surrounding property owner complaints on a timely basis. Regarding parking, we've heard from both ends of the spectrum, too much parking and too little parking. Capstone has proposed, proposed enough parking for residents to minimize the impact of parking in the neighborhoods nearby. Capstone has also agreed that if there is parking that isn't used, to provide that excess parking, to provide access to that for Olive Plaza. Regarding Olive Plaza, Capstone has had a number of conversations with them. Capstone has sent them a letter outlining the assistance that they would provide and addressing issues such as noise during and after construction, parking, and the sidewalk improvements. And that letter is provided in your packet as attachment A. Capstone has met with Look Me in the Eye, which is a nonprofit organization supporting people with developmental disabilities. Capstone is committed to looking for ways to work with this organization, including possible employment, and a letter from Capstone to Look Me in the Eye is attachment B in your packet. The project provides strong support for the use of bikes and transit between the site and the university. They are including more bike parking than required, a new bus stop integrated into the, into the project, and that's shown as that yellowish circle that would be in, the bus stop would be integrated into the project just below the bike ped path, so the bus stop would be on Willamette. They are also including a car-sharing facility like WeCar and an electric vehicle charging station. Now, we've heard throughout this process of the need to take a more comprehensive look at the bikeways between campus and downtown. Staff is proposing a study of this corridor as part of the pedestrian bicycle master plan feasibility study. So that study would look at the feasibility of upgrading the bicycle and pedestrian facilities on 11th, 12th, and 13th between Charnelton Street and the University of Oregon. At this point in time, no date has been established for when this study will take place, but it will be considered as part of the prioritizations of projects and studies in the B, the BP, the PBMP, the Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan Feasibility Study. And Capstone agrees to coordinate with this study, including providing data, surveying their students to get the information needed so that study could go forward. Capstone commits to improving the existing sidewalks surrounding the project to provide for a more inviting pedestrian environment, and Capstone is working closely with the city arborists to create specific pruning and care instructions for the street trees to minimize impact for those trees and to retain as many street trees as possible. Consistent with Capstone policy, the use of qualified local contractors, suppliers, and workers will be encouraged as much as possible. Here are the decision points for this project. The council decision points are the Mupti and the right-of-way vacation. And resolutions are included in the packet for the, they were included in your packet of materials for the public hearing and in today's packet as attachments C and D, resolutions regarding the Mupti. And action on the right-of-way vacation is scheduled for May 9th. In addition to the council decision points, the staff review and process includes the traffic impact analysis and the privately engineered public improvements. That would be including the sidewalk, for example, and also the building permits. The project is in process, and we'll go through multiple review and permit phases like any other project would of this sort. The recommendation for approval of a Mupti is based on the demonstration of need and the Mupti public benefit criteria adopted by council and provided by the project. I'll go through the public benefit criteria, and then I'll turn this over to Denny to talk about the financial analysis and the demonstration of need. There are eight public benefit criteria for Mupti. Staff reviews the application, and if the project can reach 100 points, then the recommendation can be for approval. In this case, the applicant, the application scored 210 points, including points for density, accessibility, providing a minimum of six ADA accessible units, and also the location within the downtown plan area. Now, at a minimum, Capstone plans to qualify for Earth Advantage Silver as a green building feature with lead silver certification as a goal. So the details about the green building features were not detailed enough to qualify for additional Mupti points, but are an integral part of the project. Okay, I'm going to turn this to Denny, give you the clicker.
Thank you, Nan. As mentioned, the Mupti program requires all proposed projects to undergo what we call a "but-for" analysis, which concludes that the project would not go forward but for the tax exemption. Because Mupti applications are submitted prior to construction, we always use the developer's financial per forma, basically the forecasted financial performance of the project, as the basis for analyzing the project's need for the tax exemption. And we analyze the per forma using basically the same real estate analysis process that would be used by appraisers, lenders, developers, real estate investors, which involves testing the important assumptions made regarding lease rates, vacancy rates, operating expenses, and capitalization rates. Capstone expects the permanent financing for this project to be provided by Fannie Mae through a program that's specifically designed for student housing projects. And they're using financial assumptions that, for things like interest rate, loan-to-value, and debt service coverage, that match the expected Fannie Mae underwriting criteria. Staff's financial analysis was included as attachment F in the April 23rd Agenda Item Summary, and you should have a copy of that with you at the table. Staff's financial analysis was also reviewed by the Loan Advisory Committee as part of our standard Mupti review process. As noted in the materials, we've taken a more conservative approach in that we've analyzed this project as a single-phase project rather than as a two-phase project. And basically, we concluded that building in two phases really reduces some economies of scale and really increases the project, overall project costs. In other words, it's likely that the project would perform better financially if it's built in a single phase, so we've used the stronger financial performer, the stronger scenario, to be conservative in our determination of need for the tax exemption. I'd like to briefly walk you through the financial variables and assumptions that we considered in the, in the Capstone per forma, and ultimately, the conclusion that we reached following that analysis. First, let's look at the per forma without Mupti, starting from the top. Capstone's income is derived primarily through the housing unit rents, but they also anticipate having some parking space revenue, some miscellaneous revenue for things like laundry, vending, cleaning fees, et cetera. And then they have a small amount of commercial rent as well. Capstone is projecting the housing unit to generate rent in the range of $1.48 to $1.88 per square foot, or a range of approximately $610 to $710 per bed. Given what we've seen in recently constructed student housing projects in this market, and what we know about the rents that LCC is projecting and targeting in their housing project downtown, these assumptions are consistent with comparable student housing rents for newer units. Regarding the projected parking revenue, they assume a rate of approximately $35 per space per month. Moving down to the vacancy rate assumption, standard real estate underwriting typically adjusts the income downward based on a vacancy rate assumption. Capstone has used a 5% vacancy assumption for housing units, and this is consistent with multi-unit housing vacancy in our market. And it's the vacancy assumptions appraisers are using for multifamily projects financed in our market. When the vacancy rate for the housing is considered along with the vacancy that they're assumed in the parking, what you see there is a blended vacancy rate of 6%, as expressed as a percentage of the overall income. Next, to get to the per formas net operating income, the projected operating expenses expressed as a percentage of income are deducted. Of course, property taxes typically represent a significant portion... Of course, property taxes typically represent a significant portion of these operating expenses. And with the, with the property taxes included, the operating expenses that we typically see in MPT projects are in the range of 25 to 30%. And as you see there in Capstone's pro forma, they're anticipating operating expenses to be around 32%. In our discussions with Capstone and with local appraisers and with our Loan Advisory Committee as well, we concluded that the slightly higher operating costs are justified based on some additional costs that we would expect for this project, things like onsite management, operating and maintaining structured parking, and the level of amenities that Capstone is proposing for this project is a little higher than a standard project, so we assume that there'd be more maintenance required and such. After deducting the operating expenses, the forecasted net operating income really becomes an important variable. It ultimately determines the value of the real estate by applying a capitalization rate. And without getting into too much detail about cap rates, in Capstone's pro forma, a capitalization rate of 7.25% is assumed. And when we consulted with local appraisers, they recommended that we use a range up to 7.5%. So we feel like we are within the range of expectations in this market. The projected market value ultimately determines the maximum amount that can be borrowed for the project based on the lender's required loan-to-value ratio, which is expected to be 70% for this project. Given the expected 70% loan-to-value, Capstone will need to bring 30% cash equity, which is approximately $27 million, to the table to complete the project's financing. The return on that equity is calculated by taking the cash flow and dividing it by the $27 million that is invested. This is the cash-on-cash return on investment that real estate investors typically use in their evaluation. In this scenario, that does not include the MPT tax exemption, the cash-on-cash return is projected at 6%. Capstone has indicated that the primary investor for this project is requiring a minimum return of 9%. So now, looking at the project with the MPT tax exemption, as we've seen in other MPT projects, exempting the property taxes reduces the overall operating cost for the project, which ultimately improves the financial feasibility of the project, basically either putting the project in a better position to qualify for bank financing or putting the investor in a position to generate a return that's considered to be reasonable, or in some cases, achieving both of those objectives. In Capstone's case, the important variable in this but-for analysis is the projected With the MPT exemption, that return increases to 9%. Again, we know that Capstone will need to attract an equity investment of approximately $27 million. We know that Capstone is working with an institutional investor that will acquire a minimum rate of return, which we understand to be 9%. We've concluded that the Capstone project will need to generate a rate of return that is sufficient to attract that $27 million equity investment. And if the project can generate, cannot generate that required return, we would assume that the project would not move forward. And if you recall, on Monday evening's public hearing, we heard testimony from a couple of local multifamily housing developers who basically supported our conclusion that that 6% rate of return that we see without the MPT exemption would not likely be sufficient to attract that equity to the project. The city's Loan Advisory Committee has reviewed staff's analysis and unanimously concurred with our conclusion that Capstone has demonstrated that the project would not move forward but for the tax exemption.
The city manager recommends approval of the multi-unit property tax exemption based on the demonstration of need and the MPT public benefit criteria adopted by council and provided by the project.
I'm wondering, there's two, two ways to build this project, unphased and phased. Capstone's indicated that they're going to use the phased approach, but this, the material that you just showed us is the unphased approach. I'm wondering why you would, why not show us the phased approach, the way it's actually going to be built? But I don't get that. I mean, it's kind of an idealized thing that's not going to happen. Why can't we see the building?
In fact, when we analyzed it as an unphased project, it was, the project looked more favorable, therefore, it was a more conservative approach to analyze it in that way. The project is actually more expensive and loses efficiencies when it's phased. But the phasing comes in because Capstone heard early and often from the community that it would be a better project if it were phased.
I see, but then we see another, another part of the material that the phased approach is going to cost you quite a bit more money.
It does cost more money, but it is one of the community benefits that they have agreed to.
I'd like to be presented with reality, the way that the project is going to be constructed. Okay, that's, that's a comment. First of all, I really have to object to the shortening of our meeting. This is one of the most important projects that council has considered in the last year or more. And as important as the presentation from the urban renewal review people is, that could have easily waited. And so now we have 35 minutes to discuss this. That's really, I think, poor planning. I still have 10 questions. I'm sure other councillors do. So I just want to say I'm really disappointed that this meeting is structured that way. Okay, here's a question, that I think really goes to the heart of the matter. In the MPT application itself, in the statement of support of January 24th, it says, quote, "It has been determined the highest and best use of this site is for the new construction of an urban density, single-purpose student housing community." I'd like to know, who made that determination? Who made that determination?
I think, I believe you're referring to a statement that was provided by Capstone in their application, so that actually came, that was a conclusion they reached that doesn't...
I see. Okay, well, I'd like to see their analysis. To make a statement that that's the highest and best use of a property and included in the MPT application, I think that we need to see their analysis.
We could ask them for that.
Oh, I think it's key. I think it's important. Because otherwise, that's, that's just a, you know, unanalyzed supposition. And, you know, to, to, for best, a single use of it, it is a transient monoculture of 18 to 22 years old. I, I think that a lot of people would disagree with that and would like to see their analysis.
Another round? Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there have been a number of areas of concern that have, that have been brought up, and you systematically answered the areas of concern, so I won't go into much detail. I was concerned about parking, based upon the fact that there was either a lot of parking or not enough parking. And I think, based upon the fact that you're prepared if it's too much parking, or they are prepared if it's too much parking, to lease out the parking elsewhere. And I was concerned about the population mix, you know, having many students downtown. But in fact, I don't see that as being too much of a different demographic than we can expect downtown in any way. Then I was concerned, I heard concerns about management structure and the requirements that have been put in place, it seems to me, covered the concerns about management structure, but certain things will happen no matter who owns the property. And certain, certain safeguards have been put in place as far as management and ongoing sustained management is, is being safeguarded. So I'm really, you know, my concerns have, have one by one been addressed, so I won't take too much of the time since we did up a, a short meeting. But I do want to look at the growth management policies once again. And when we're looking at the project, whether it's based upon MPT or just the project in general downtown, as I look down the growth management policies, we're checking them off one by one. I had an issue with number five, perhaps, that was cooperatively with metro area partners Springfield and Lane County. And I was thinking, it doesn't really, but then I thought back on Ash Lane, which was a student housing project off Harlow Road in Springfield, built in '69, '70, something like that. The buildings are still there, but, but student housing, if we don't have student housing inside of the community close by the university, then ultimately, what happens is you get Ash Lane, which needs much more transportation. They have to travel much further to get to the university. And, and so it, really, I was concerned that maybe Policy Five was one that wasn't being addressed, but even if Policy Five's being addressed. So one by one, I check off the list on our growth management policies, and this is hitting it. And, and I won't go through the litany of what the policies are, just, you can read them, they're on the wall, there's no secret there. And I just, you know, it really excites me to bring more people downtown. Students are a welcome addition to the community. And as far as the tax rate is concerned, I guess an alternative might be if, if it doesn't go into private investment, which is a, at least a 25-year annuity that we're buying into. And, you know, how much is it going to pay back over 25 years? If it doesn't go into private, then potentially, you know, the university is looking for places to house their students. And if it goes into university housing, then what is our tax return on university housing? Anybody tell me? I think it's zero. Yeah. Zero is not a good tax return. Thank you.
Anybody else in the first round? Alan?
So I think it would be prudent for the council to take action on May 9th and not today, so I would encourage us to do that. There's several things that I'd like to see reworked on, on the resolution, and a couple of questions that still need to be answered. And I don't think we're in any rush to actually move this forward. We still, we've scheduled that date for actual action on the alleviation and easily do this part then, too. On the MPT, so if I understand what you guys were saying correctly, on the phased approach, which is the way they're going to build it, it increases their cost to do the building. So therefore, when we did the analysis, their rate of return would actually be lower, which, on, on the project without the MPT, which would actually show more need from MPT.
That's correct.
So the reason you chose to do the more, the less expensive one is because it was the most advantageous to showing the, the need, as opposed to the, the highest cost version of the project. So it was the lowest cost version.
That's correct.
But we showed the phased approach, it would just reinforce the need for MPT.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, one of the things, Gene Tate and Hugh Pritchard both talked about the, the rate of return that's required for real estate development in projects like this, and, and both of them said that 6%, there wouldn't, nobody would do a project like that at 6% rate of return. And, and Gene Tate actually said she probably wouldn't do one at 9%. But, so, what, besides those two people who are both trust knows their business because they've been into town doing that stuff for a while, can you talk about that a little bit more and, and what it takes to get a real estate investment threshold? And compare it to, you know, George has brought up grocery stores at 2% to 3%. And to me, those are kind of non-sequiturs because they don't, the money available for real estate is not the same money that's available for other types of investment.
That's correct. It's hard to, to look at that as apples to apples because real estate investors are actually looking at opportunities to invest in real estate and not other various options. You know, traditionally, we've looked at a range of 10% to 15% as being a reasonable assumption for rate of return. I think as Mr. Pritchard indicated the other day, those are adjusted downward these days just because of the economic situation and such. I would say if, if this were a stabilized property that was 100% occupied and had three or four years of, of history of stabilized occupancy, an investor looking to invest in a project like that may be willing to accept a return kind of on the lower end of, of expectations. This isn't the case with this project. It hasn't been constructed yet. There's existing infrastructure on the, on the site that makes development more complicated, maybe more risky because, you know, you're dealing with a building, an old building, it might have all kinds of issues, which will raise the cost and, and affect the, the return in the end. So, you know, everything we've looked at, we've looked at investor rates, returns on, on student housing all over the nation, and we're, I think we're in that range. We're probably even on the lower end of that range at 9%. So I would say it's a, it's a reasonable expectation for an investor investing $20 million, $27 million into this market.
Okay. One of the provisions of the, of the, in the resolution in the MPT was that it be, the project be built by both phases, the project shall be completed before January 1st, 2022. And I noticed that, that's 10 years out, that's the end of the MPT period. So can you explain that? Why isn't it 2014?
It's a statutory requirement that it's required, all projects are required to be completed before the, the program sunsets. So we put that in all of the, all of the resolutions.
The MPT program sunsets in 2022?
Yes.
For him? For this, for this, because it's a 10-year, it's a 10-year window.
When we give him that, right. For this, or is it the old program?
The overall program sunsets in, in 2022. And as we, as we ran into when our, the old sunset date was approaching, there were some projects that were lapsing over the sunset date for the program, and we had to give them an extension because their construction went over the, the end date, so...
Is this coincidental that the 10 years is...
Yes. I believe so, yes.
And so what, what happens if they violate the provisions of, of the, of the MPT application? So, and I'm, and I'm, and by that, I mean, is that the resolution?
Yes.
So the provisions in the resolution in the "now therefore be resolved" section, one, two, three, four, five, six, five.
Helen, you went in another round, I'll wait, she can answer, but I...
Yeah, I do need to...
We would have the ability to call back the exemption if they are not, if they're in violation of their, of the commitments that they made or of the resolution. Do you want to get into more detail on that?
You said, "call back," what do you mean?
Disqualify.
Amanda, you want to talk?
Make it zero.
If they violate the conditions contained in the resolution that are conditions of approval, the MPT would terminate. We'd bring something back to the council. We'd say they have violated them. They would have an opportunity to tell you why they haven't violated them. If you agree that they violated them, you declare that, and the MPT goes away. As of that point going forward.
So that's council action?
Correct.
I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments on this. One is that the bike and ped path, I, I think you are thinking about this, but I just want to be sure that as you think about how that operates and, and feels and is used, I think that has the opportunity for being a space that the Olive Plaza folks can use for walking and things. I just want you to think, as you think about that, about elderly or disabled people using that path. So that's, I want to put that out. And then I had had a conversation, and I know that when LTD built their station there, they, they put some air conditioners in on the lower, the bottom five floors, and there is probably the possibility that there, it will be some noise activity that might flow over to the top floors of the Olive Plaza. So I have brought up before and hope you'll take into consideration a notion of some air conditioning provision maybe for some of the upper floor folks. I'm just putting that out there. And the other thing around the sidewalk, I know there's difficulties in, in improving a sidewalk up by Olive Plaza as opposed to right next to Capstone because the building is so close to the, to the sidewalk. But I'm, I'm hoping that we'll use that as an opportunity to look to see if there's anything we can do to make that function better for the folks in, in Olive Plaza, too, as part of this whole thing. So just some things I, I've probably mentioned them before, but I wanted to mention them again, that they, it's, they're livability issues. Betty?
Thank you. First, I want to say, we definitely should not take action right now. We have not given enough consideration to this. And it really is amazing to me that you bring us a statement that it's the best use of the site, and that statement comes from the potential developer. the site, and that statement comes from the potential developer. We have, and I want to point out that 100 points doesn't mean that we must approve a MUPD people, it says may, and people keep interpreting that to mean must, it's only that you have to have that before you can. We've gotten a lot of thoughtful comment, and much of it is questioning the advisability, not only of the tax break, but of this kind of use for that spot, of something that's big, of the same type. And as someone has pointed out, or more than one person, it's one of the last vacant places we have left in this area, and there may be other uses that would be better for that, that someday we might want a county hospital, for example, we might want a youth center downtown, there may be other, and to say that that has been vacant, therefore we should grab the first thing that comes up, doesn't make sense to me. We're finally, as everyone has pointed out, seeing some development, which will be an incentive for further development, as things happen, other things happen incrementally, and you're seeing that happen already. I hope you all read the, the rather lengthy email from Lloyd Hellickson, which has some very good arguments in it. He's, he's done a lot of work looking into it, a lot of people have, I, I don't, when I'm considering public input, I don't count the people, I think of the strength of the arguments, of the people, and the people who've made the arguments. Which brings me, which reminds me of something else I wanted to know, who was on the committee? I always want to know the people who are on a committee that advised something. I'd like to read just a little bit from this Mr. Hellickson's email, I hope you all will read it, it was dated yesterday, I think. When's, no, today. No, I've got, I'm picking up another one. Never mind that, but, "The basic purpose of MUPD is to meet a need," quoting, he's quoting from the purpose we have, "a need and demand for better housing at rental rates or sale prices accessible to a broad range of the general public in the core and transit-oriented areas, which is not likely to be produced without this incentive." Eugene Code 2.9451. And, "MUPD for university student housing no longer meets this basic purpose." He also has included figures to show how much student housing exists, and how much is currently being built, and quotes the university as saying, "All their students are currently being housed somewhere."
Another round, Betty?
We need another day, really, but thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just have to make a couple comments. So I am prepared to move on this MUPD today, unless my constituents have something they're going to add to the resolution, and I just want to ask Steph, how much taxes the property pays now?
Our indications that they've paid about, we have about $5,000 coming in income on the one piece of property that's not owned by Sacred Heart.
The property itself will bring us how much money next year?
$100,000.
As soon as, as soon as the land transaction occurs and it goes into private ownership, it'd be about $100,000 per year.
So is that retroactive, and when do we get the check? You know, I mean, come on.
Send to mail.
Okay, good deal. And the other thing I just have to comment on, this, this, Peace Health has been putting, has been moving out of that building for about five years, to my knowledge, I don't think it was a secret just to employees. So there have been opportunities, and I know that there's been a lot of conversation around people, around the table at different places, on what that could be used for. I think it's very subjective for us to say that is not the best use for the property. I have a firm belief that if somebody buys property, that it's their decision as to what the, what the property can be used for. If we had, if we had the ability to purchase a property ourselves and to do something with it, would I agree to this? I don't know, I would have to, I would have to see what that would be, but we don't have the money to buy the property, nor do I think it'd be a good idea for the city to buy the property, so I, I, I just think that that's just kind of an interesting statement. So, to my peers, if you have, unless you have something to add to the resolution today, I'm, I'm ready to move on this.
Second.
I don't think she made a motion yet.
I know.
And I can't.
George, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been reading in Attachment Cab, and reading the answers to questions 14, 15, and 16 regarding the need for student housing, and I've been doing some calculations, and I, I've come to the conclusion, to keep to Elgerson, is that there, I don't see a demonstrated critical shortage of student housing now, nor for the next few years. Of the beds that are being constructed now, will be open, new beds will be open next fall, that's 1,048 beds. Projected U of O enrollment, this is all from staff answers, the increase over the next 20 years is 160 students a year. These are the ones that will not be taken care of by cities during building. And, so, and that's without Capstone. So the 1,048 students divided by 160 beds per year, is that's just housing supply of six and a half years. With Capstone, the number of students, the supply of beds is 2248 divided by 160, that takes us up to 14 years, based on the university's own projections. So, you know, I, I kind of see this as, and this doesn't even take into account all the other stuffs that's going to be happening between now, next year, the next few years, there's going to be other applications for, for building student housing. I, I don't see a need here. So my question is, to everybody is, does the city really need to subsidize 1,200 more new beds, especially, we know now, you know, because the supply that we have now is good for six and a half years. So these 1,200 beds are going to take existing tenants away from existing tax pay landlords all over town. Right, and is this a public, is this really in the public interest? I, to me, it looks like it doesn't. You know, that it's not, you know, one reason the housing prices have held up pretty good in Eugene compared to a lot of places around the country, is because we can open and build here. You know, the vacancy rate's about 4%, there's no housing glut now. Housing is available, when someone sells their house, chances are, it may not be, they're not going to get what they would have got, say, 10 years ago, but they're still going to, it's going to be decent, it didn't fall drastically like it did in other cities. The reason is because there's no glut. I see this as, as creating a glut. Subsidized by public money, by public tax dollars, I tell you, I just don't see the need here. Thanks.
So...
Another round, too?
Okay, it's now about 17 minutes after, I've got second round for Alan and Betty and Pat, and I've, I'm going to let Mike and Chris in earlier, because they haven't spoken yet, but I did want to just say, for your consideration, is that I think, you know, from, as we listen to people, we know that there are some people who are probably not ever going to be supportive of this, and we know there are some people who are going to be supportive, and I guess the question before you as a council is to look around and make sure that you get everybody on board that's possible to get on board for the decision you make, so, and if that takes more time, I suggest you take more time to be sure you do get as much agreement around the table as, as is possible to do, about whichever way you decide to go. So, Mike and then Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, I, too, am ready to move today, but I hear Alan with some questions that he, and I hear him as someone who may want to support this, but wants to make sure of those last few things, and so I certainly could wait till the 9th as well, but I wouldn't want to wait beyond that. Could you give me the number again of what will be the property taxes paid at the end of the 10-year cycle?
It's estimated about $1.2 million in year 11.
In year 11, okay.
Per year.
So, this is, this for me is, is the simplest kind of decision, when we have the front page of the paper today talking about the tax base is going away to the county, and what's that, what that means in loss of services, and when we had an entire work session dedicated the other day to the 700 to 1,000, to 2 million a year that we need in order to adequately fund human services. If we have the capacity to incent adding value to our community, and adding value to the tax base, to the tune of another $1.2 million a year, that's the proper way, in my opinion, that we should be looking to solve the problem of how do we afford the services that our community deserves. So, not only are we getting a great project, but we're getting the chance for 10 years from now to have this level of increase in, in revenues that, that allow for the services folks need, it's, seems a no-brainer to me.
And Chris?
Thank you. Really, my comments are, are more procedural, in terms of what happens, and while I am absolutely capable of acting today, one of the things that is always on my mind is, when you act out of sequence to what you said was going to be the way you do things, that's always the, the part that I always wonder about. And I understand the desire to provide certainty, as soon as possible, for somebody who's potentially looking at a large amount of money. At the same time, I'm also wanting to be true to our agenda and what we have communicated to the public in terms of when we would take action on different items, and somebody may not be here today because they didn't know we were going to act on it today. And so, yeah, I could, I could certainly vote on it today, and I would be comfortable voting on it today. I want to make sure, though, that there's not an unintended consequence of taking action outside of when you said you would do things. We've done that before, and it's always given me heartburn, and so I don't want to be, oh, I'll do it when I, when I'm going to vote this way, but I don't want to do it when I'm going to vote that way, I want, I want to be consistent in terms of when we do it. So, I'm willing to wait. I, I really, I'm willing to wait, because I think in terms of what we have set as our agenda, what the public thinks we're going to do, is, is how we should do it. I'm confident that we will reach a, a good resolution, just want to, want to do it the right way. One question I do have, though, is, between today and when we're scheduled to do this, the record is not still open, there's not more information that we are expecting to receive on this. The record's closed, right?
For MUPD, it wasn't a quasi-judicial decision, and there essentially is, we're still accepting public comment until the time that you make a decision.
So people actually still do have an opportunity to provide comment between now and when we would take action.
Right.
So that could be a, a reason why you want to have, people have a full opportunity to provide input, even though it's not quasi-judicial proceeding. I guess if I had my druthers, I would probably err on the side of, let's do it when we said we would do it, and, and I think we can still provide certainty as quickly as is reasonable to Capstone, but I'm, I can't act today, but I would prefer to do it when we said we'd do it.
George Poling?
Well, I kind of feel the same way, I could, could have taken action today, but in the interest of consistency in what we do and how we conduct business, I'm, I'm very comfortable with waiting until the May 9th, which was the original date set, gives everybody another opportunity to voice their opinions, it gives the people in the community time to send some more information in, it also gives time for Capstone to address any additional issues that may be raised, which is a good thing, it's all, you know, it's always a good thing to allow a little more time. You know, there's a discussion earlier about the, I'm trying to remember how it started, but somebody raised the question about tying the MUPD to, or tying the tax break if the MUPD is violated, can we, you know, attach somehow to, to nullify it? Well, now's not, I don't think now's the time to change the rules in the middle of the game, again, back to consistency, that's something that we can address, and John and I talked about this yesterday, and he could probably do a little bit better recap of the conversation, but I think it's better addressed in this, in an ordinance to, like they said in the presentation, of projects of a certain size, or meets a threshold or something, rather than change the rules on people that have been going all along following the rules, I, I think we'd have that discussion at a later time. And, you know, I, I'll have to say, you know, and I don't want to sound like I'm picking on you, Betty, but I have never voted for a MUPD just because they got 100 points. That is not the reason why I vote on a MUPD one way or the other. I look at the, granted, the points is, is a factor, but I also look at the overall benefits. So just because somebody reached 100 points, in this case, it's over, it's, I think it's one of the highest scored MUPD projects we've ever had, you know, I'm, I'm not basing my, my decision solely on that. You know, I, I just want to extend my gratitude to the people who showed up Monday, or, was it Monday night, to kind of all blur into each other, and they were very good points from both sides of the discussion, and, you know, you could pull out any one of the emails and read a section from any one of the emails from anybody, and they, they have a valid point. But at the end of the day, you have to look at what, what is best for the entire community, and, you know, it's just, we're just going to have to take one last look at this, and I, I'm very comfortable with waiting till the, my opinion made to make a final decision.
Okay, Alan?
She needs to declare a conflict of interest.
Okay, okay. All right. Go.
Okay, I need to declare a potential conflict of interest as I am employed by Peace Health.
Okay, good. Alan?
Yeah, thanks. I handed out a letter that came from the Sustainability Commission, to each of the councilors, and just to reiterate, what they said was that they are supportive of the project, it's highly consistent with a bunch of city goals, wide range of city goals, plans and policies, this development to advance our growth management policies, our transportation system plan, many of the pillars of envisioning Gene, our general aspirations for downtown redevelopment, the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan, and the council adopted goal to reduce fossil fuel use by 2030. And so they were very supportive of this. They did have a couple of suggested comments, like creating a mechanism for accountability on, on, on the green building things, which is another concern of mine, which is one of the things I'd like to ask about adding to the resolution. So we have all these public benefits that we've identified, that, that Capstone has already agreed to, and, and I think that's great, and I'm supportive of all of them, but I'm also, as President Reagan said, trust but verify. How do we verify? How do we assure the accountability that these will actually happen? Seems to me the only leverage we have is the MUPD resolution, that if they violate it, then, then we could potentially take that away. So if that's our only leverage, can we do it in a different way? Can we attach a MOU? Can we attach attachments to the, to the MUPD application? Because we have this long list of, of, of public benefits, including the fact that they said they would meet Earth Advantage Certification or Lead Silver, and that we have the commitments to Olive Plaza, we have the alternative modes and transportation issues like bike parking...